Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Greater Napanee regular session of council for the 10th day of October 2023. Before we get started, I just want to remind everybody that this evening's meeting is being recorded and live streamed. The Town of Greater Napanee YouTube channel. So having said that, we'll call the meeting order. I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved by councillor Hicks, seconded by councillor Shank. There's no further comments, questions or concerns. All in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Is there any disclosure pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, deputations. We've got a number of deputations tonight. The first one of our scheduled deputations is a Mr. William Calucci on behalf of EDF Renewables. So come on up, sir. Welcome. Yeah, and you'll see that the microphones are on and we'd ask you just to to speak as close to the microphones as possible, just so the folks at home can can hear you. We can probably hear you without it. It's just the folks at home can't, and I'm sure they'd be interested. So welcome and go ahead.
Fantastic. Let me know if you need me to speak up at all, but I'll do my best here. I just want to thank Mayor Richardson and council for letting me speak today. I'm William Calucci, I'm a project developer for EDF Renewables, and I'm here to present our Bethany Battery Storage Project. To keep things moving today, now we have a short time, I'll sort of move quickly through the first several slides and focus more on the IESO procurement and the Bethany project itself. But I've included more information about the company for your reference and happy to talk about it if needed. To moving forward, to quickly summarize EDF Renewables, we're the owner and operator of one of the largest renewable energy pipelines in North America. The EDF Renewables group that I work for is a part of the EDF group. That EDF group operates all around the world and which allows us to utilize a global network of partners and resources to develop sort of the best renewable energy projects possible. Their renewable arm specifically operates in 22 countries around the world and has installed nearly 19 gigawatts of renewable energy. In Canada specifically, we've been operating since 2008. We have a growing pipeline of over four gigawatts of projects in Canada itself. One of our key success is through meaningful partnerships with First Nations partners. Through these projects, we've been able to create over 1700 megawatts of projects with First Nation groups. And we're currently in discussions with a First Nation partner for this project as well. Regarding energy storage specifically, we have 19 projects currently built or in development in North America. The photo shown on the screen here is an existing project just outside of Chicago, which has been in operation since 2015. But the reason I'm speaking today is because the ISO is moving forward with the largest procurement of energy storage in Canada. They hope to obtain 1600 megawatts of projects that come online by the year 2028, and that comes in line with this project specifically. As was explained in the ISO Resource Eligibility Interim Report, the failure to integrate this kind of technology could create conditions similar to those seen in California where they had shortfalls in rotating blackouts due to challenges in their electricity system. Battery storages of interest to the province as it's a flexible module resource and can be placed where it has most value. And that includes in growing urban areas, including Greater Napanee, and my apologies for the error on the slide there. The procurement date for this submission is December 12 of 2023, with contract awards in Q2 of 2024. And again, projects in online by the year 2028. A key component of that procurement is to obtain a municipal support resolution. This does not remove any local planning or permitting processes, but it's more to demonstrate that the municipality supports the the technology in principle at the time a bit and allows developers to submit these projects to the ISO. At EDF, community engagement and public consultation are two of our top priorities, and we're committed to being present in the community and available to all throughout the lifecycle of the project. The public consultation will continue throughout the lifecycle and comes in many forms. That includes information sharing with municipal leaders, both prior to this session, as we've had conversations with Fire Chief Hammond and Deputy Chief Feeney, as well as several discussions with Michael Nobes of the Growth and Expansion Services Department. That way we can better understand what are the needs and concerns of the city itself, of the town. As well, we are about to come online a dedicated website for the project that will share details about the project itself. And we'll be hosting a public community meeting to be scheduled. It's actually scheduled for November 1st. That way we can allow all constituents to come and ask questions about the project. I've personally knocked on the door of each home within a kilometer and a half radius of the project. That way I can speak to people about any questions or concerns. And anyone I wasn't able to to meet with, they're encouraged to come to the open house and they'll be receiving proper notices as prior to that council date or sorry, that open house date in November. Something else I'd like to mention is that part of our proposal on this project is that we'll be offering a community benefit fund for the project. This will be in the form of about $25,000 per year for the contract term of the project. So that'll be ongoing. The contract terms with the ISO are for 20 years. So you're looking at $25,000 every year for 20 years. So this is the project specifically. It's proposed to be between 100 and 250 megawatts of capacity using a four-hour system. Since I submitted this this deck for the deputation request, we did receive results from Hydro One. And they stated that we do have capacity of up to 250 megawatts. Now, we know that there are other projects being proposed within Greater Napanee. So due to the transmission constraints and the the shape of the system, it's likely that only one of these projects will actually be granted an award. But we're hoping to to have this project be one of those projects. The site itself is located on private land and our landowner Todd Grant is here in attendance tonight just to show support for the project. The project infrastructure will be cited on approximately 10 acres of land. We chose this site due to its great location next to the existing transmission line owned by Hydro One. The project is set back about a kilometer away from the nearest non-participating home. And is in an area of open field that is sort of sheltered by some natural tree mitigation already. So due to the setback and due to the existing of this, you know, natural vegetation buffer, it really reduces any risk of seeing the project or hearing the project from anyone else. And the majority of homes in this area are actually about a kilometer and a half away from the project site. So it's quite well set back and well hidden from from view. In terms of the operations of this project, you know, safety is one of our core values at EDF. And part of our operations for this site will include a local team of operations personnel to monitor and maintain the system to the highest of standards. We'll create an emergency preparedness and response plan with written feedback from the first responder community. And as mentioned, we began consultation with the fire department. They'll be part of our ongoing consultation through this process. As well, the facility is monitored 24/7, 265 days a year from our operations control center, which is that image on the screen. And there they're able to monitor any electronic cyber physical security concerns. So today I'm asking for a resolution of support from council for an energy storage project within Greater Napanee for the upcoming ISO LT1 procurement on December 12 of 2023. I'd like to just quickly stress that, you know, this MSR does not grant any permits or specific approvals, anything like that. It just simply provides support for us to submit the project to the ISO, and we saw a long permitting process, including the municipal permitting process that we'd go through with with all departments to make sure that it's, you know, developed to the highest standards possible. And I understand that there's some citizens, citizens speaking tonight about the concerns for the project and, you know, encourage them to attend our open house on November 1st and happy to chat with them later on tonight or in the future, as well as any other interested citizens that aren't able to attend tonight or open house. You can reach me at the contact info shown on the screen, and they'll be included in the publications for the open house. Now open up to the questions.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, William. Does council have any questions or comments with respect to the presentation from Mr. Calucci here tonight? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
So what what kind of batteries or what's the material you're using with these batteries? Are they lithium ion or lithium iron?
There will be lithium ion batteries, very similar to those seen in your computers on your cell phones and things.
I got one question for Fire Chief, if that's possible. Chief Hammond, we've discussed before about, you know, preparing us and readiness for these type of of systems in our in our community. Could you elaborate a little more as as our readiness on it?
Sure. So through your worship, excuse me, Hydro One has undertaken through, I believe it's Alliance Insurance, a fire protection risk and response guide that they provide to all fire services in the province of Ontario. I believe it's also now gone international, but it has an eight chapter manual on how to deal with and mitigate any situation, whether it be smoldering on fire or a spill of these types of containment units. It talks about commissioning these plants, decommissioning them, their suppression systems. All of it has to meet industry standards. We're confident in the response plan that we've put together, as well as the one that Ontario Hydro has offered us as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Councillor Penel. Thank you, worship. Through you to William, you mentioned that the closest house is approximately a kilometer away. How far will this project be from from County Road Nine, the road?
It's about a kilometer from Highway Nine as well, County Road Nine. So we'll be doing improved access roads from Highway Nine down to the project site.
Okay, I thought there was houses in front of that. So so there's no on this proposed land, there's no houses on it?
So there's one house owned by the landowner, but the nearest non-participating home is about a kilometer away.
So so my main concern has been with all these projects that we've been been approached on is the ability of to get to it if there is an emergency during the winter time. And and I it just just my luck, it would be that would happen after a horrific snowfall, that sort of thing. That's just my only problem with these sitting so far back from the road. And I and I know I agree 100% why they are so far back, but that is a major concern that I need to get over or I can't get over. So that's a that's a big thing for me. And Mr. Mayor, just one more question, but directed Mr. Nobes, if that's okay?
Yep, go ahead, Councillor Penel.
For you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Nobes, will this land need to be rezoned for this project?
Excuse me, through your worship, a public use is a permitted use in this zone, in the rural zone. Within the definition of public use, transmission facilities such as this would would fall under that definition. So the zoning is in place. However, if this project were to be successful through the ISO procurement process, there would still need to be a site plan approval applied for wherein we would ensure that there's adequate mitigating measures and put in place, you know, screening, buffering, considerations for noise, stormwater management, spill containment and the like. But from a zoning perspective, this use is permitted in the zone.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Penel. Is there any other questions or comments for Mr. Calucci? Yep, go ahead, Councillor Shank.
This question is basically for clerk, deputy clerk. As the process is, there's no way I'm going to make a decision on this tonight. By no means until you have an open house, until it's gone through its process, because when you're saying here, you're looking for, you know, a standard approval right now. That's kind of jumping the gun for anybody that might be have any arguments towards it or anything else like that. So that's I just want to make that clip clear. I know there's a rush here for December 12, but hey, just.
No, I think when you hear the the way that the wording for the the resolution will go, and and in normal circumstances, we don't give decisions with respect to 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 deputations, but you're absolutely right, Councillor Shank, is that the resolution will suggest that it be brought back with a staff report at the 24th of October meeting for for us to be able to provide a a letter of support if that's the direction that we're going to go. So. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I thank you, Mr. Calucci. I think you answered the questions that I had with respect to the land, whether land was owned or whether it was going to be leased. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. We do have a resolution that council note and receive the deputation from EDF Renewables. And further that council direct that a staff report regarding the request for a municipal support resolution be brought back to the 24th of October meeting for consideration. So hopefully on the 24th of October, we'll have we'll have an answer for you, and that should get you well within the deadlines of the 12th of December, I think, if I'm not mistaken. So. Thank you very much. Who wants to move that? Do we have a mover? Moved by councillor Shank, seconded by councillor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, go ahead, Councillor Shank.
I've already got the answer, but I just want to hear it from the source, because now there's a lot of these best the battery energy storage systems that are being applied for now. Ontario Hydro, I haven't seen anything in writing, but 2029, they're supposed to be decommissioning the Lennox plant. Now, I've heard this, never seen it in writing. Why is there a big push to put all this on private land or on ag land, all right, or rural, all right, rather than on land that's going to be decommissioned that Ontario Hydro already currently used? I've heard one answer, but I'd just like to hear what this company's answer was.
I'm not sure, but I'll allow Mr. Calucci to answer, but I'm not sure Mr. Calucci has the ability to answer for Ontario Hydro. So if he wants to take a stab at you, you're more than welcome, sir. If not, then I think probably the correct direction to go is maybe to contact Ontario Hydro and ask them that question.
Yeah, I mean, you're exactly right. It is very difficult to have these kind of partnerships with Hydro One specifically. They are not. It's not really in their business model to be the ones hosting these projects specifically. It's usually the developers that are the ones that are proposing and developing and building these sites. That said, you know, we have to sign agreements with Hydro One to connect to their infrastructure. But at this point, that's sort of as far as they're willing to go in terms of hosting the project infrastructure itself. And it has to do as well with, you know, setbacks from Hydro One transmission lines and things like that.
That's the answer I got from all the other people too. So I just wanted to make sure all the answers were great.
I love consistency. Yep. Okay, we've got a resolution. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Nobes.
Your worship, I just wanted to bring to council's attention that on November 1st will be their public open house that will be held. So perhaps we, there was discussion around October 24th for the staff report. Perhaps we push it to just the first meeting after the open house, just to see if there's any comments or concerns that that come of that.
I I think that's, sorry about that. And I wasn't aware of that, but sorry, Mr. Nobes, that's absolutely, I think it's it'd be prudent to to put this over past the open house date. So we'll bring it back. So the open house is the first November. We can probably bring it back the first meeting of November, and that still gives you probably three, four weeks for you to get to your applications in. And Madam Clerk, do we do we need a date for that? And if we do, do we know what the first meeting in November would be? I've been advised it'll be the 14th of November, so we can, with a friendly amendment, our mover and secondary, that we bring it back for the 14th of November. That's good with everybody, and I'm sensing that's good there. And do we have any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motions carried. Thank you again, Mr. Calucci, and we'll see you in the middle of November.
Thank you very much.
Our next scheduled deputation is going to Mr. Aaron Feeney with the results of the Napanee walking audit. So come on up, Aaron. And I think you've been here before, so I think you you probably understand the microphone system as well as any of us. So go ahead, and the floor is yours.
Check, check. We're good. Here we go. So Mr. Mayor and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to present the results of the walking audit we conducted on the 29th of September, which I brought up in my previous deputation and then organized. The intent behind this audit had a handful of objectives. First, it was to provide insight into the condition of pedestrian infrastructure in two of the key neighborhoods in Napanee. Second, it was to demonstrate the concept and value of walking audits as direct tools which should be incorporated into the town's planning and maintenance process. Data and technical manuals are certainly important, but nothing can ever replace personally taking a walk around and seeing how things are for yourself. So the route which the audit travel took traveled between the old and new town halls and was broken into four distinct phases. Phase one, we met at Market Square and assessed its amenities. Phase two, saw us travel up John Street until reaching Graham, evaluating the conditions along that route. Phase three was a second route audit conducted along Center Street until reaching Advance Avenue. And phase four was a second location audit at 99 Advance. It's provided a good comparison of two locations of similar function and two routes by which someone might navigate the town. The method, the methodology of our audit was the walking audit toolkit produced by the American Association of Retired Persons. I wanted to find a Canadian one, but they are slimmer on the ground than I thought they might be. I chose this for a couple of reasons. First, it is a well-established organization which has conducted many thousands of walking audits over its history and has developed a robust package. Second, as Napanee is an older community, the ARP's focus on seniors meshed well with the town's stated intent to improve awareness of and services to the issues faced by elderly members of the community. Third, its design struck a good balance between being technical enough to deliver good data while not being so intense as to be confusing for first time users. We only use two of the 11 sheets, the location audit and the route audit, in order to keep things simple. But the package contains a comprehensive series of assessment checklists which paint a vivid picture of the pedestrian conditions at any given audit site, including assessing usage demographics, crossings, sidewalks, traffic safety, appeal, transit, and adverse weather conditions. In future audits, I hope to leverage more of the package to improve the quality of the return data. So the comparison of the two town hall sites provides a pretty stark contrast despite their similar civic functions. Market Square is a bit rundown, but ultimately a very safe and inviting place to be in and travel through. Sidewalks have some cracks and a few heaves, and the crossings could use a fresh coat of paint every couple of months. But ultimately, it's a place one would feel comfortable walking with elderly parents or young children. And indeed, one of our audit members brought along her infant niece in a stroller. There were dips in the pavement which make navigating crosswalks very easy for her, and there is good separation from cars which travel at low speeds in the area. In contrast, the space in front of 99 Advance is quite hostile while on foot. There are no sidewalks whatsoever presenting the choice of standing on the roadway or in the ditch. We were fortunate to have good weather, making the ditch an option which would not exist in winter or on a rainy day. Cars travel on Advance Avenue at significant speed, correctly reading the street sign as one in which automobiles are the undisputed kings. In fact, Advance Avenue is so dangerous to pedestrians that our member with her niece was unwilling to join us, leaving the audit to continue home by a safer route. The ARP audit provides space for giving a location overall score. Market Market Square received an average score of about 2.4 out of 4. While Advance Avenue received a unanimous score of 1 out of 4. Pedestrian traffic has been completely ignored in advance, with the exception of a strange vestigial piece of walkway which runs from the front door of the civic building and spits out into the curb cut traffic entrance to the parking lot. It was clearly intent in the design for sidewalks to exist on Advance Avenue, but following through, and that has not yet occurred. Another striking difference is in the construction of the two and the construction of the buildings in the two locations. Market Square has buildings which front directly onto the sidewalk, providing immediate access to pedestrian traffic. Parking exists both on street and in the many gravel lots in the area. But they are not the exclusive or even the primary way by which someone would access a store or home. On advance, however, every structure is set well back from the roadway, and with the exception of 99 Advance, do not have a pedestrian route to the front door. There's a baseline assumption that everyone will drive to the location, park in front of the building and access from the parking lot. More than one location is to be accessed, one would drive between them, even if they were right next door due to the frequent ditches which occur between buildings. Well, not as striking as the difference between the two town halls, there is a considerable gulf in the quality of infrastructure comparing Center Street to John Street. Center Street is a major thoroughfare, and so traffic along it moves at high speed and is often quite heavy. Industrial traffic is quite common. The ability of this traffic to lose control and leave the road service was evidenced by large pieces of debris found on the sidewalk and lawns from a previous collision. It's a wing mirror lying in the off the side of the sidewalk. As well, Center Street presents a highly effective barrier to pedestrians, cutting the town in two. The crossing at Graham Street used by students walking to and from school is largely ignored by drivers. Maybe one in 20 will actually yield to awaiting pedestrian, as according to the law. John Street is much better, calmer traffic and wider sidewalks. The sidewalks have also been neglected for some time, though they were wide enough in most places for a pair to walk side by side or comfortably pass by one another coming head to head. Unfortunately, part of that space is a former grass verge which was crudely paved over and is interrupted by lamp poles, forcing a walking pair to either break apart or stray onto the lawns of residence, which I'm sure they appreciate. The other key drawback of John Street is this dead end of the train station with no crossing of the tracks. Pedestrians are forced onto the more dangerous Center Street sidewalks. Pedestrians are forced onto the more dangerous Center Street sidewalks if they want to access either town hall, the police detachment, or any of the other businesses and services, which have become the focus of the administration's efforts. The underpass on Center Street is fairly well built. It's not the prettiest, and it's pretty uncomfortable, but the grade separation means that a pedestrian traffic is separated from the speeding traffic below. The collision or loss of control under the bridge would send a car into the concrete wall rather than across the sidewalk. Unfortunately, the only access to this grade separated crossing is via the pedestrian sidewalk peeping in. The absence of a set of stairs or any other access from the closest cross street makes navigating this crossing a daunting endeavor. That said, many people do use it, and we saw several on the audit. For many in Napanee, there is simply no alternative than to use this more dangerous infrastructure to go about their lives. At Advance Avenue, the sidewalk on Center Street ends on the east side, and the pedestrian crossing is available to move from one side to the other. Close inspection of the poles reveals they're mounted on shear bolts, fastening intended to break away if struck by a runaway car, saving the driver's life at the expense of anyone standing on the corner. Transition to Advance Avenue loses much of the speed and volume from center, but also loses the sidewalk entirely. The dark irony in putting the already vulnerable in greater danger in order to access the police station. On the whole, Center Street is a technically serviceable but deeply uncomfortable and unsafe space on which to walk. It's clear from the evidence found by the audit that pedestrian traffic has for many decades been given something of short shrift in Napanee. It should not be allowed to continue. Safe sidewalks and protected crossings are not luxuries, they're basic necessities which many of our neighbors rely upon to make their way through life. Current state of that infrastructure sends a message to them that they're simply not as important as people behind the wheel. There are places in town which even after many years of missed maintenance are quite pleasant to be in. Those spaces should be repaired and reinvigorated, yes, but also emulated. So town grows into the industrial and commercial space between the railway and the four oh one. Basic accommodation of people on foot must be looked after. You saw people on foot in these areas, putting life in limit risk because they had no other option. Even further north, where no sidewalks exist at all, people can frequently be seen walking along the verge, making their way to and from work as eighty kilometer an hour traffic speeds by. Instead, we should aspire and immediately begin to execute on improving the safety and navigability of these people to show them that they are just as much a citizen of Napanee as anyone else, to ensure that they will, in fact, make it home at the end of their shift or their school day. The audit conducted on the twenty ninth was a simple one. It was intended to serve as a proof of concept. Walking audits are a valuable tool which shed critical light on often overlooked aspects of town infrastructure. It's too easy to overlook the hazards, difficulties, and indignities inflicted upon those on foot when we see our town through only our windshields. Walking audit should become a part of the official town maintenance cycle. It's conducted regularly, and the results incorporated into the maintenance and construction plans. For my part, I intend to continue running them. I'm looking, expanding upon their scope and gathering data, looking into a mapping project, which will generate a better picture of the town from a bird's eye view. The ability to access homes, businesses, and town services is a basic necessity for all people, regardless of age, ability, or finances. Walking or rolling in a wheelchair is the most basic form of access. I do not believe that the neglect of its infrastructure, that neglect this infrastructure has faced has been some sort of deliberate conspiracy. Rather, the unfortunate outcome of a rush to grow at maximum pace and a misguided belief that the automobile is an equalizer for all without trade off. Cars are vital to our town's economy. I don't suggest we push to remove them, but they are dangerous and expensive and polluting. Those detriments must be acknowledged and accounted for. Street design is more than any other factor that determines whether that space is safe and inviting or dangerous and hostile. I, for one, would prefer to live in a town which was safe and inviting, and I'm sure you would too. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, thanks, Aaron. Does anybody from council have any questions or comments with respect to Aaron's report and then his walking tour that he's conducted? Go ahead, Ange.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you again, Aaron, for the opportunity. I don't consider myself elderly yet, but I can tell you that walking on Center Street was terrifying. It, it really, like, my instinct was to, to push the girl in the stroller, like, onto the grass. It, it's really, it's something that we all need to take into consideration as new developments are built. But the older infrastructure as well definitely needs to be looked at. That I, as a guest, I said, I asked Aaron, I said, my God, how fast was that transport going? And he said seventy, seventy-three kilometers per hour going down the hill, a fully loaded transport. The noise, the closeness, it was, it was really quite, um, yeah, I did not enjoy that part. Graham's or John Street was lovely. It was a nice stroll. Center Street, not so much. So I would just thought I would back up what Aaron said there. Thanks. And there's a lot of neighborhoods. Some of them are in, in Ward Two, where there's no sidewalks at all. Young kids, there's, there's nothing. And I've already heard from some of those residents, so. And it was talked about during the audit that they would be looked at later. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Hicks. Is there anything further from anyone else on council? Go ahead, councillor Penal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Aaron, how many people attended this day?
There were about fifteen people there. I collected thirteen audit packages. A few people shared. Had thirteen or fifteen people, not including the baby. That was about what we had show up. We had a few more people who came to, to say hi and show support, but weren't able to join us for the walk, but we had about fifteen.
And did you, do you happen to have a feel for the age of the people that showed up?
It, it was an older group, largely, I think, because it was a Friday at two in the afternoon. So that's going to be more available to more retired persons. However, there were definitely working age people there. A few who asked me about the, my previous deputation about setting up businesses at home, who are definitely not retired yet, but there, there were fewer people, I think, in my own age demographic.
Okay, thank you. Got a couple of other ones here. They're gonna be touchy, so. Why, uh, why didn't you put the actual picture of ninety nine advance avenue or new town hall in your presentation other than a storage unit building?
So I was trying to get a picture of what it looked like standing in front from ninety nine advance, looking out onto the street. That's where that picture was taken from.
No, that picture is not of ninety nine advance at all. That picture is a picture of the intersection of Center Street and Advance.
Bring that one back. Lost it. So the, the area around Advance Avenue is pretty similar throughout. The, a, as I mentioned, there is a bit of a sidewalk in front of, of ninety nine advance. There we go. So that is what that space looks like throughout that streetway. The, the difference between there and perhaps up the block is not, is not considerably different. I, I didn't personally take the photo. But it, it, it looks very much like that on that area.
Okay, so with that being said, in your report, you're stating that you're either on the road or you're in the ditch. There is a gravel, a bit of a gravel side to that all the way in that area. So I wanted to point that out, and I see that I'm gonna have opposition here. But I mean, with the time effort, I, I would have liked to seen in your report, the actual picture of ninety nine advance, so that it would be, it would flow through on this. You know, crossing, crossing the train tracks have always been an issue here in town. I can remember living here where we actually crossed over top of the tracks, so we would have had to walk over that. When we went to the underpass, that was a considerable upgrade for us. And to have a feeling of being unsafe walking through there where you are even mentioned that it's elevated, there's a railing. I, I kind of take that hard because that, that's probably other than going up and over and in a cage is probably the best that we're ever gonna get. And if we're gonna try to cross at John Street, which is private property via rail, and then on the other side is private property, there's, there's never gonna be any, any feasible way of getting across there. So I just want to point out that any studies going forward, if you have concerns, I would suggest that we try to increase that crossing safer, if you will. And I, I, I'm kind of concerned with how people were saying that it was unsafe.
Perhaps I miscommunicated, councillor. The actual crossing that, that grade separate is quite safe. That was actually the best part of the Center Street walk. The issue isn't so much the crossing of the tracks, it's the fact that that crossing, which is quite nice, isn't immediately accessible from the, I'm trying to remember the name of the street. I don't know if it even has a proper name that, from, from the train station, you could walk laterally, parallel to the tracks and go to Center Street. But there isn't much of a, an access. There's sort of a beaten path down the grass that would bring you right to the, the underpass. But that is A, very steep and B, not an intended pathway. You have to step back a block and come out onto the more dangerous sidewalk before you were able to get to the, the quite safe, but noisy Center Street underpass. It's that, the lead up to it rather than the underpass itself that's the issue.
Yes, thank you. As you say, that's an unintended path there for sure, also would be stairs going through that, that garden, if you will. You did hit the nail on the head. There was one thing that I, I did appreciate that you said regarding the school crossings. We have two crosswalks here in town. And I don't think that the residents know what to do. If somebody's standing there at the corner, whether there's lights flashing out, we don't have lights on these. If there's somebody standing there, stop them, cross. The one on Center Street during school hours is manned with crossing guard. Oh, sorry, we have three. There's one up on the hill as well. And there, they have crossing guards. And there's one by the school. But during off hours, there's no crossing guards, and people just think that they can go through there. So we need to have a clear definition whether we only stop when there's a crossing guard or we stop when there's somebody standing there. So that is one part of that that we do need to expand on. So thank you.
Thanks, councillor Penal. I think councillor Shank, did you have a comment or question or?
As we all well know, that through the planning process, you know, years ago, they never put sidewalks in, in, you know, some of the subdivisions that were done. The new subdivisions are done. There's wider roads, there's sidewalks and everything else. And as the money is with the municipality and with the taxation, we totally, I'm a firm believer that, you know, sidewalks are gonna definitely need to be built, you know, if you can't get to the new town hall, you know, you know, it's, you know, without having a sidewalk or something safe where you can with a lady or gentleman pushing the baby carriage or whatever. We have definite concerns, but it's all dollars and cents and see what we can do. And if it ends up being just a, so much per year that we can do, but we have to go in that direction. So I agree with the report in principle. It's just that all depends how much money we have and where's the, or just need to be done, and then we'll go from there. But as the new planning, after you go through the, some of the new subdivisions, there's a beautiful wide road and sidewalks everywhere. But where the ninety nine advance, I don't believe it was designed for years ago when Napanee did it, to put a sidewalk there. It was supposed to have been something else or whatever. So we're just gonna have to improve on those things and do what we can with what we have and go in that direction.
Oh, of course. Sidewalks are a pretty major capital expenditure. I mean, maybe not a highway, but there, that's expensive. Canon paint for the crosswalks, I think, is much more of a short term thing. These are, they're all steps. And the idea behind a walking audit is just to gather the data and narrow down, here's what needs to be done, and so you can put it into priority.
The one, if, when you go through downtown, pick it. You can push a button, and then there's like a little amber light that goes off that, you know, somebody's walking across. If it's a safety concern in, on Center Street, you know, after hours. I don't live in town, rural area, but I've seen what other municipalities do, and as soon as that light flashes catches a lot more people's attention and gives them a little bit of stop, but does that constitute the person that presses the button automatically think they can walk across also? I don't know. You as ex-police officer maybe have that better answer. So something has to be looked at there also.
There's, there's always gotta be a, a segment of common sense as well that's implied to, to, so. Is there any other questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor Martin.
Aaron, thank you for your concern for the safety of the residents in Napanee. I, I think it's a good idea, certainly for you to do the audit. I, I don't necessarily agree with everything. Your assessments, do you not think that some of the problem on Center Street is just driver habits, not, not a problem with infrastructure?
So I believe that the, the infrastructure informs our decision making. When you're on a street, you're going to be subconsciously absorbing the signals that it sends to you. A wide, straight lane is going to encourage you to, to speed up. You're going to feel more comfortable. Whereas a narrower street or one that has a more irregular surface is gonna cause you to slow down. Speed bumps are kind of a duct tape solution to the problem. I, I don't think that they're a, an appropriate solution in particularly in Center Street, being a major industrial and economic corridor. But I do think that something to look at there might be a sort of a protective island in the middle, so that you can cross one lane of traffic, paying attention in one direction. And then you've got a minute to change the direction of your attention before you step out into another high speed lane. There are a lot of potential solutions to that, that, you know, are beyond the scope of my audit. But I think it is a problem that merits the attention of, of planners and some exploration of the options which have been tried in other parts of the country and the world. Yeah, go ahead, councillor.
Through you again, mayor. Thank you. Aaron, am I understanding that you're saying narrower streets are better for pedestrians?
Narrow streets slow traffic, which can be a good thing in certain cases and a worse thing in other cases. It's a, a question of what you intend this road to do. Do you intend it to carry high speed auto traffic? Do you intend it to be a safe place for people to spend time? If it is going to be a high speed route, which means it's a county highway, of course, it's going to be. There should be some consideration put into, okay, how do you cross this line? How do you prevent it from being a barrier to the community? Again, not an answer that I have in my back pocket, but something that bears, I think, considerable thought.
If you don't have any statistics of wide versus narrow is better, worse, or?
The, not the numbers on me, no, but the fact of the matter is, if you think about driving down a, a narrow street versus a wider street, you're going to be more comfortable driving faster on a wider lane. This is why highways have wider lanes than residential streets.
I don't know. My, myself, when I have a wider roadway to travel, excuse me. I can focus better on the entire, I mean, if someone comes across off the sidewalk, I can see much better in a wide area than I can a very narrow area. I mean, if you're closer to the pedestrian, I don't, I don't, I don't see how that'd be safer, but I'm just. And I, I don't mean, I don't mean to criticize because I, I, I think it's a, it's a good thing what you've done here, but it's just, um. I know we're not a hundred percent perfect here in town, but I think our sidewalks and roadways, you know, they've improved quite a bit over the years, and I think Dundas Street, Bridge Street, well, East Street's an example right now. We have eliminated one sidewalk on one side of the street, but the street is wider because of that, I think. And I think it's safer, but that's just, again, my opinion. I'm sure others have other opinions. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, councillor Martin. It's, go ahead, councillor Hicks.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So if council would like to pick, pick a date, I think it would be a really good idea if we all went up, parked in the parking lot at video ninety nine, walked under the bridge and crossed back over onto the east side of the street and back under the bridge, and then try and cross back over to your car. Right there at Isabel Street. I think you and I could not walk on the sidewalk together, Bill. I would have to follow you or you would have to follow me. None of us could walk side by side. The sidewalk is literally two feet wide, two feet wide, and you have exactly nine seconds on the walk signal to get from the south side of the area to the north side. We crossed as a group and some people didn't make it on the light. So and it's, that's a major intersection, as Aaron said, that's why he, he picked that area. And I, I was quite enlightened at the end of the audit. So if, if council would like to do this, I would be more than happy to walk it again, terror and all. It, it's an eye opener. It's, I, I had never personally walked that before. And I've lived in Napanee my whole life, so, yeah.
Thanks, councillor Hicks. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing?
Got one, sir.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cobre.
Through your worship, actually, this may be more for Michael. So when we build and redo roadways as they need and as infrastructure is required, you not put in sidewalks and stuff now?
Through your worship, yes, our Capitol Works Department undertakes assessments for when roads are to be reconstructed, you know, understanding current rate of way. current rate of way, limits, uh, existing road cross sections and the like. Installation of sidewalks is, is put as a priority where, where it makes the most sense. So yes, as, as roads are reconstructed, there's a focus put towards, um, ensuring that infrastructure is, is installed.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm just referring back to the industrial park when they AFR was, uh, cornfields and we put roads out there to start selling it off to, uh, service the industrial parks. So as roads get replaced, then there would be sidewalks put in at that point typically. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Is there any other further conversations with respect to Aaron's presentation? Seeing none. Thank you, Aaron. Uh, thank you for, uh, investing the time and effort, uh, for doing the walking tour and it uh, obviously provides us something to think about, uh, as we move forward with respect to, uh, building roads, neighborhoods and, and things like that. So, uh, thank you for taking the time and presenting to us tonight. So.
Thank you.
We'll look for a motion to note and receive Aaron's, uh, deputation with respect to the Napanee walking audit moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Deputations with respect to items on the agenda. We have, uh, Mr. Gavin Cross this evening to, uh, speak about the opposition to the proposed B E S S project. So come on up, Gavin. Oh, yes, I forgot that, uh, I think you do have some printouts for us. So bring them up and then disperse them. All right. Thank you. Either the microphones are on, Gavin. Um, we just ask you to, like I say with everybody else, just to speak in them so that the folks at home can hear us. We can probably hear, hear you very well. It's just, it's more so for the folks at home. So thanks. The floor is yours.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Council and, and Mayor, uh, for allowing me to speak. What you have in front of you is, uh, itemized list. Took me all about six seconds to find that information on the internet. Uh, I believe it's approximately a hundred and sixty-seven B E S failures across the world, uh, since they started to become a thing. There's, they're, they're, uh, quite a dangerous, um, system. So I'll begin, uh, best, uh, storage event failures are a serious and worldwide problem affecting lives, property and potentially causing a vast ecological harm. Regardless of country, location, current safety measures and regardless of the age of the system, the size of the system or the system status. Ultimately, B E S S projects within Canada, which has a reliable and safe energy production system encompassing hydroelectric, nuclear and L N G production facilities is not necessary. B E S S is not an energy production method. B E S systems, B E S S systems do not at all address CO2 production. B E S S systems not incorporated into existing generating stations are a solely business venture using catchy words such as climate change as a misnomer and rhetorical business mythology. The B E S S projects separate, separate from a generating stations use the cloak of climate change to gain governmental, governmental grants and public traction at all levels in order to build the battery, battery storage facilities that have a proven track record of failures and use extremely hazardous and toxic materials within its systems. To be perfectly clear, B E S S will produce no energy. B E A E S S will likely buy energy from Ontario Hydro or Ontario Power Generation during low load times at a discount and then resell the electricity back to Ontario Hydro or Ontario Power Generation during peak times. This is a business. I do not have any problems with businesses, but I do not believe that we need toxic businesses within Greater Napanee. Furthermore, I question the validity of the stated reason for some B E S S needs. Oh, we have an upgraded and proven safe natural gas facility nearby that provides all of our electrical needs. Stating that B E S S is needed due to the Lennox Power Generating Station closing in twenty twenty-nine. Well, Counsel Schlenk, I'm gonna be able to directly answer your question. Um, is a horribly misleading statement as the Lennox Power Generating Station currently operates at one point five percent capacity on average during the year. The Napanee Generating Station will not be closing and covers any and all power production that may be lost by the closure of the Lennox Station. I am keenly aware that there is an approved B E S S facility that will be built next to the Napanee Generating Station. Having such a system managed by the same corporation that runs the Napanee Generating Station does make some sense. It is still dangerous, but it will be monitored and managed by the same corporation. It will be monitored and managed by staff on site and it will presumably have emergency systems on site as well. The B E S S system at that location is located on the shores of Lake Ontario and there is at least a fifty percent chance of toxic airborne materials going over the lake. There is also year round access to emergency vehicles at that location. For the safety of our children, the quality of our life, the future of our municipality and our families, I would be opposed to any further business ventures or any related ventures that deal in such toxic materials. B E S S, a battery, doesn't produce energy, just stores it. Nothing green about this. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Cross. Is there any questions or comments for Gavin, uh, with respect to his presentation? Seeing none. Thank you very much for presenting tonight. I'll make sure that our clerk has a copy of the documentation that, that you provided all of council. So it's a part of the record. And, uh, thanks for taking the time of coming. So I'll look for a motion to note and receive the, uh, presentation from Mr. Cross with respect to his, uh, opposition to the proposed B E S S project moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Pennell. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Thanks again, Gavin.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, um, if I may say one more thing. I have a couple of guests from the Netherlands staying with me for a while. So maybe we can get a mayoral welcome to our, our visitors.
Well, welcome from the Netherlands. Uh, how long are you in town? Yeah, well, make sure that you take advantage of all the beauty that we have in this community and also the beauty that we have in this province and country. So it's a wonderful place to be, a wonderful place to visit. And if you stick around long enough, you'll see some wonderful snow. So, welcome. Moving on, we'll move on to the administrative consent agenda. Again, this is something new that we've, uh, added into our, uh, agenda package. Uh, we'll start with the, uh, the regular session of council, the minutes for the regular session of council. Is there anything that anybody wants to pull out and speak to with respect to that? Seeing none. Uh, committee minutes. We have, uh, a report from the pool advisory and the municipal heritage committee. Is there anything that anyone wants to speak, uh, to with respect to those minutes of those, uh, those, uh, committee meetings? Specifically, the pool advisory committee and the municipal heritage committee. Seeing none. Uh, correspondence for information with respect to items dated October tenth, twenty twenty-three. Is there anything, uh, any of those correspondence, anybody wants to pull out and have any conversations with? Seeing none. And the procurement update cooperative purchasing report, is there anything in that, uh, report that anybody wants to pull out and have any conversations with respect to that? Seeing none. Uh, so we have a resolution that, uh, council cons- consent to the approval of the following routine items, council minutes, September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Uh, that the minutes of the regular session of council data, September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three be adopted as presented. The committee minutes, September twenty twenty-three, that the draft and municipal heritage and the pool advisory committee minutes from September nineteenth to twenty-first, twenty twenty-three be received for information that the correspondence for information items that the correspondence for information items dated October tenth, twenty twenty-three be received. And SR thirteen, three, one, three dash twenty twenty-three procurement update cooperative purchasing that council received for information, the financial services procurement update cooperative purchasing report moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Unfinished business. I don't believe, Madam Clerk, we have any unfinished, finished business that we're aware of. Moving on, items for consideration. Up first is the draft community grants and donations policy. And Mr. Zatterberg, will you be speaking to that?
Your worship, the intent of having this before council tonight is give you a first look at it. If you have any questions, specific questions, we can record them and bring them back at a future meeting. The idea is to have, um, a, a direction from council on what you want to do with grants and donations during the budget process. So we can, uh, we can bring you some, some numbers of, of what we, we know we're going to receive from organizations in the community.
Thanks, Mr. Zatterberg. Is there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Grant, does that, does this mean that the existing policy will be in effect for this year? Like for the upcoming year or we're gonna look to have the draft, draft agenda accepted and then that comes into play for this budget, for budget deliberations?
The intent is to have a new policy in place for the twenty twenty-four budget.
And, and thank you for bringing that up, Counsel Hicks. I know that there's a number of questions for discussion that, uh, I believe, Madam Clerk had put in there and maybe I think it'd be appropriate that we go through those discussion, um, questions just so that, uh, staff has some answers to those questions. So, um, the first one is, is does council wish to include in-kind support in its tracking of grants or should this continue to be operated separately? What's council's thoughts or, uh, opinions with respect to that question? So we can, uh, give some direction to staff. Counselor Pennell?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I see, yes.
Uh, is there, and I see a lot of nodding ahead. So it seems to be an indication that yes, um, in-kind support, uh, should be part of the tracking of grants. And am I correct with that, Counsel Pennell? Great. Next question is, does council wish to continue engaging the Lennox and Addington Community Foundation to administer smaller grants on its behalf to reduce the administrative burden of reviewing and evaluating grant applications? What's council's thoughts on that? Counselor Pennell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question and I might be embarrassed if I already know the answer, but do we get a report from the foundation of who that they handed the monies out to and, and is it presented to council?
Counselor, uh, Mr. Zatterberg, I, I'm not aware of any reports. I haven't seen any reports. Uh, I, I like the idea that, that we can, um, engage Lennox and add to committee with respect to it. I, I'm sensing that there isn't a report from them.
Through your worship, uh, in my time, I, I haven't received anything that, but I haven't been through a full fiscal year at this point. So I don't know. I'd have to do some digging to look on. Unfortunately, I can't give you that answer off the top of my head.
At your, your worship, uh, we, in the past, we have, I think it was prior to COVID, we would receive annual verbal reports, presentations from the executive director of the foundation. It's my belief that that director has retired and there's a new, there's a new executive director now. Uh, but doesn't mean that they, they would, if we request it, they would definitely come to council, um, to make their, to make an annual report. Thank you. Yeah, I can't, uh, remember ever having a report. I do remember having verbal presentations here. Just maybe something for council to consider if we go with, uh, with, uh, question number two is, uh, as he asked, that maybe have either a presentation or something in writing going forward.
I, I, I think that's most definitely something we can look at. Uh, I, I like the idea of engaging them because it, it keeps council and, and staff really at arm's length with respect to issuing the grant. So I like that idea, but I also like the idea that probably once a year, um, whether it's a verbal report or a presentation or even a written report, I think is probably, uh, just to keep a surprise as, as to where the money's gone. And, and I know that they do a good job and I don't believe that, uh, it's, it's, it's not being done properly, but, uh, just for our own peace of mind, I think it's probably not a bad idea. Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Uh, I think, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Mayor. That's where I was going with this wasn't to make sure that the monies was given out properly. It's more the feel-good stories that come of those monies and, uh, and the pride that we actually do have in this community. So that's more of what I'd like to see of. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Pennell. Uh, is there any other further comments with respect to that aspect? Seeing none, and I think, Mr. Zatterberg, you've probably got a pretty good indication as to where council is going with that. And we'll move on to the last one, which is if there are operational changes to be made for how eligibility is determined, what is the timeline council would want to use to phase out any of the current law staying, standing arrangements that may not meet the criteria under the, uh, new grants policy? And I think we sort of touched upon it with, uh, Counselor Hicks's question. So, um, the phase out period. I, I think we need to go through probably a fiscal year, I would think, um, to allow if there's somebody that's expecting to get certain things that, that they, they're giving, given well enough in advance so that they can make other arrangements. Would I be correct in, in, in suggesting that?
Worship, there are some community groups that have come to rely on, on the funding from the town. So it would be with the, we should be engaging in conversations with them before we would, we would pull any, any funding.
Okay, very good. Um, is there any other comments or questions with respect to that? Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Through you, your worship. So, uh, Grant, can we get the staff report on what those groups are and what their expectation would be for twenty twenty-four? That's also going to come into the, one of the budget sessions.
Yes, so your worship, similar to the budget time last year, we presented a list of, of organizations that we knew were going to be coming forward for money and those that had come forward for money in previous years. That was during the budget process.
And the SOS group is included in that?
Yes, uh, they were included for twenty twenty-three and they'll be included for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, go ahead.
Through your worship, uh, just to comment on that kind of transition period. Am I correct to assume the intent is they will still try to meet this in the first year? Is, is that, I, I want to interpret that from council fully, um, just as my expectation is I would like to try and start people this year, um, following this process. So next year, we're not struggling through it again with them, if that makes sense. I know the, I know the expectation level isn't, they're gonna meet everything to a T. And we'll still consider them, obviously. It's just more, can we get them on that path this year rather than, then say the grace period isn't to start next year, the grace period is to start this year and get on that path, correct?
So, if your, your question would be similar to what happened this year, we set a budget and then people came forward after the budget was set. So I guess what, what finance is asking for is that there's no surprises during the budget year or as little, as little surprises as possible during the budget year.
Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Through your worship. So if we know that there are fifteen groups, I'm just picking a number, that we gave funding to last year, those fifteen groups should have a direct communication from town staff saying, we are changing the policy. This is what you have to do this year. It doesn't mean if you don't meet all the requirements, you won't get the money, but moving forward, this is going to be the process. That's what you're asking, Nathan?
Through your worship, that's correct. Yeah.
I think it's an excellent idea.
And that allows us for twenty twenty-five to hit the road running. Is there any other further comments or conversations? Seeing none, we've got a recommendation that council received for information, the draft community grants and donations policy and that, uh, council provide direction to staff with respect to the draft policy. And I do believe we probably provided that direction. Look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counsel Hicks, seconded by Counselor Pennell. Look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Pennell. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns. All in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Growth and expansion, street naming policy update. Mr. Knowles, you're going to speak to this. Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, thank you, worship. Staff have been considering updating our current street naming policy for, for a little bit of time now. We've noticed that pretty much all of our new development, street naming has been very much developer driven. And what we're, what staff are proposing to council is on, on the recommendation of the heritage committee. That we reevaluate that policy and come up with a, essentially a bank of names that are pre-approved by council. With community input that staff can propose to developers to say, here's a list of names, select from the list of names for, for. Assigning street names. This would still come back to council as development, new developments occur. Or if there's any new street name changes planned for existing roads, for example, but it's a good starting point. And it would really be, I think, of assistance for staff and development proponents. So staff are recommending that we would update that policy, bring it back to council for endorsement. And thereafter, go to the community to solicit names for this list, this, this bank of, of names. Which would include rationale for why, you know, specific name would, you know, meet a set criteria that, that we can, we can decide upon. Really what we're looking for tonight is council's authorization to go ahead and amend our existing policy to. Essentially revamp it, revitalize it for, for current day discussions around place naming and, and really kickstart that. That bank of names. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Really, our existing policy is pretty, pretty bare bones. I think we can really. We would beef that up quite a bit and have a lot more. You know, measures in place to ensure that our naming is what we want to see as a community.
Thanks, thanks, Michael. Is there any questions or comments with respect to Michael's presentation? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, yeah, Michael, on the Heritage Committee, we banded this about our last Heritage Committee. You submitted, you were looking for us to approve or suggest street names on the new subdivision. And. We were, we were kind of hesitant in some respects because. The developers, in a lot of cases, name streets after relatives or their family names and that sort of thing. But we were trying to come up with heritage names, basically. So like Cartwright House, there was, you know, one suggestion. And. Heritage Drive and the name of the first mayor, Napanee Davy, for example. So, but we needed to get kind of clear direction back to council for, to set a policy. Because it, it's kind of got all over the place, developers name streets themselves. So that's why we suggested that we come back to council with it, so.
Thank you, Counsel, Counselor Martin. And I believe, I, I, I think it's a really good idea, I really do. And it won't be so restrictive that if another name comes up somewhere down the road that's not in that bank, that we, we couldn't consider it. But I think it's, I think it's important for our heritage to, to make sure that we can still recognize and identify some of our heritage. That's in this community. I mean, we're rich with the heritage. So I, I like the idea, but sorry, I shouldn't have been talking so much. Is there any other comments? Anyways, I think it's a good idea, Counsel Martin. Long, long, long story short, I, I think it's, it's, I think we need to clean it up and we need to tighten it up. And, and be really transparent with it. And I think it's, it's a good idea, so. Counselor Shank, and then I'll go to Counselor Pennell.
So if this is suggestions of the names that the Heritage Committee wants to do, and they go ahead and give that to the developer, all right? I have no problem, but if the developer is stuck and would like to go ahead and name a name. That that person, the developer who's putting the money in to develop. And to put in the millions of dollars that it is for all the infrastructure for the roads, the houses, before they get a sent, sent back. That they take, you know, great authority. If you're going to go ahead and none of us have given one dollar towards that development. And that developer is making that risk and he would like to name it after his first daughter. Well, I think he earned the right of millions of dollars. Like I put a five hundred thousand dollar road in and I called it Shank Street. So you know what I mean? None of you guys put a dollar into that road. So all I'm saying is as long as what I feel is the developer has that say also. That he's not just kicked to the curb and saying, these are the names you're going to do after you give us millions of dollars and put the down payment and go through all the work that you had to go through too. So that they, that they have a say also. You can give the suggestion, yeah, if you have a great idea, a good number, then if they don't have a problem with it, great. But if they would like to, you know, may have that main street for a reason why, then I think that that developer should have that option also. That's just my point.
And I think that that flexibility exists in this policy or will exist in the policy. Am I correct, Mike?
That's where, that's correct, your worship. Yeah, staff would encourage, you know, here's our bank of names. What do you think? If they're adamant, you know, they want a specific name, we would go through the process of, you know, ensuring that. You know, neighboring jurisdictions don't have the same name where it's going to cause issue from a EMS perspective. And ultimately, council's the approval authority for names and plans of subdivision, so it's council's decision ultimately. So we would, we would encourage to select from the list. Council has final approval.
Thanks. I think Counselor Pennell, you had a comment?
Mr. Worship, Mr. Shank has asked that question in further detail than what I would have, so I no longer have my questions been answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pennell. Is there any further comments or questions? He, seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, the growth and expansion, street naming policy updating report. And further that council direct staff to commence updating of the town's street naming policy and procedure. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Growth and expansion, true by Hilton Hotel request for development charge deferral. And I believe Mr. Knowles is up for this as well.
Yes, thank you, worship. Staff have re-received a request from the developer for the hotel at the corner of Jim Kimmit Boulevard. And McPherson Drive, plan to be a true by Hilton. The request is for council to approve the deferral of development charges. There's not a waiver of the fees, but a request to delay their payment by the developer to the municipality. Staff have reviewed from many different angles, this request. Certainly, i- it's a large sum of money, you know, just north of three hundred thousand dollars. I will note that development charges are obligatory funds, meaning we can only use them for certain types of projects, certain growth related projects. We have a number of, you know, growth related projects, one being the, the expansion of the wastewater treatment facility. So we do anticipate utilizing development charges, the, the bulk of our development charges, water and wastewater for that project. The timing of the receipt of the funds as proposed by the developer, which is two years from the date of breaking ground. We would receive that well in advance of needing that for, for such a large project as the wastewater treatment facility expansion. So essentially what I'm saying is that these, these funds are not yet earmarked for a specific project. This deferral is permitted within section twenty seven of the Development Charges Act. And staff are proposing approval, given those permissions to the municipality. In the act and after consultation with, with the developer, we're proposing a number of safeguarding measures to. Protect the municipality's interests and I'll, I'll just run through them very quickly for, for council. Staff would propose that a guarantee be, be provided by essentially another corporation. That can essentially act as. You know, if, if there's a default by this developer, then we are able to, it's a demand instrument effectively. We can demand the separate corporation who's acting as a guarantor to cover those funds. We would register this agreement on title to the land. And the developer would have to acknowledge through any agreement for deferral that if they are to ever sell the land. That the purchaser enter into an agreement with the municipality on the understanding that there is an amount owing to the municipality. We are able to charge interest on the outstanding amounts owing. Staff are proposing a rate of prime plus zero point two five, two five percent. We are able to build in a sunset date. So although regardless of the status of construction. We are able to say by this date, the fees are owed in full. And if any amounts are gone unpaid, we're able to collect them as like, as taxes by placing the, the, the amounts owing on the tax roll. So with all those safeguarding measures in place, staff are proposing approval of the request. And the request is that twenty five percent of the development charges owing be deferred from the, from six months. From the date of excavation, so effectively six months from today, twenty five percent. And that's just, just over ninety thousand dollars is twenty five percent. And the developer is proposing that the balance of the funds owing, which is just over two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Would be deferred until occupancy or twenty four months from the date of beginning excavation. So either, either twenty four months or once, you know, the key, the keys are in hand and they're able to operate that facility, the sooner of the two. So given the timelines involved, the obligatory nature of development charges and the safeguarding measures that we're able to put in place. Staff believe that this is a, a valid request and staff are, are supportive of the, of the request and would recommend approval to council.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Knowles. And, and this project is a shovel-ready project. I think the project is ready to go tomorrow, I guess. You know, it's, it's that shovel-ready, so, and these people are, they've already invested in our community. I think the, the site is, is actually owned by the, the people that are going to build this, this motel, right? So they do have an investment in this community already, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct. Yes. And in this site, I will add too, has gone through a rigorous planning process. There was a zoning bylaw amendment undertaken last year or the year prior, rather. Site plan approval has been obtained and building permit is ready for issuance. So it's, you know, all checks and balances from, from the municipality side are, are in place. It's just this request to effectively free up funds to really get the project moving in the right direction at the start. When large amounts of capital are, are needed.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Michael. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Knowles with respect to this? Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
I have no questions, but I would move staff recommendation.
Thank you, Cass. Counselor Hicks, move staff recommendation, but Counselor Hicks seconded by Counselor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, Mr. Knowles. Sorry, I guess you're up again. Infrastructure Services Utilities Emergency Purchase of Two Sewage Lift Station Pumps. So go ahead, Michael.
Thank you, worship. I really don't have much to add beyond the report that was penned by our Utilities Department. Effectively, what has happened is at, at every sewage lift station, there, there, there are pumps in those stations. To force sewage entering into that station up, out and into a gravity portion of the sanitary system. When those pumps fail, that is a problem. That is a major, major problem. And that's where you get sewage backups into homes. This was, these purchases and installations were a, a very, very much in a, an emergency situation. So the purchases were made in the earlier part of the year and installations were made as soon as those pumps came in. So there is, our Utilities Department was able to limp by until those, those pumps came in. Luckily, there was not an influx of flow that caused further issue. The, 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 the pump manufacturers that the pumps were purchased from had just very recently invoiced the municipality for those pumps. So that's why, although the pumps were purchased earlier in the year, the invoicing was delayed until a certain bracket was, was. Given to the municipality as part of that order, so that we weren't invoiced for anything until the, the order was fulfilled in full. So the, the actual pumps were received. It was just, you know, the, the mounting brackets that were, that were outstanding, that we were able to get by with. The, the former brackets. So now that those are in the, the invoices have been received and staff are bringing this forward to council. For, for your awareness of those emergency purchases.
Thanks, Mr. Knowles. Is there any questions or comments? I have Deputy Mayor Calver and then Counselor Hicks and then Counselor Pennell, I think.
So these are the same two pumps that we previously approved to be purchased, or is this two new pumps?
My understanding, these are two separate pumps.
Okay, because previously this year we bought two pumps, now we're buying another two. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Hicks.
Through you, your worship. That was my question. So these are considered spares to have on the shelf? Or these are going to be put in?
I believe one is a spare and one, one is a full-time operation.
Through your worship, that's my understanding, yes. I, I believe one of the backups failed originally too, so they had to replace the backup on the original replacements. So we had to bring in two to replace one essentially because the backup failed the first time.
And are we going to get yet another one if this is something that happens unexpectedly? Should we have two on the shelf?
I, I'll, I'll say at, at this point in time, I, it's on staff's radar, utility staff's radar that, you know. These are heavily, heavily used, high fatigue type items. They're on or off many, many cycles. So there's a, you know, the, the life of them is heavily used item and it's going to fail. There is a failure date. It's just when that's going to be, you never really know. So having. Essentially at least a, a budget line item to plan for, whether it's physically on the shelf or having the funds available and ready to use on short notice. You know, as fiscal years finish up and we see budget year end numbers. When the reserve allocations are being, you know, given, you know, if there's a surplus in a year. The anticipation would be that a portion would go to utilities, general reserves, a portion would go to emergency pump type reserve. To build up a piggy bank in this type of instance where we're not digging into general type reserves.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Counselor Pennell, did you have a question?
Thank you, worship. I just found the report kind of confusing for myself to read. It was like a shell game. Trying to figure out how many pumps did we actually buy and how much did we spend for them and like that. And I do believe to answer a question, I think, from Deputy Mayor, I think it was just a total of three pumps that were purchased on that. Not, not the fourth, one, one in, on the July eleventh report for fourteen thousand. And then tonight, we're seeing the report for two pumps for, for the twenty four thousand, just under the twenty five thousand threshold. Anyway, that's what I was just going to say, so I was going to ask a question of why they were delayed, but that was answered on that. Thanks. But I just, just found the report a little confusing, that's all.
Thanks, Counselor Pennell. Is there any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Through your worship, Michael. The Reda Villa, Reda. How fast can we get these pumps if need be? Like are, are they some, they are stocked somewhere or is this something that we should really consider having on our shelves?
My understanding is, through your worship, my understanding is more or less they're, they're on a shelf unless they're inundated with, with orders. On very short notice. In this case, Salzer was, was contacted. Because of availability and compatibility with the system and they were able to provide that in, in good time effectively.
Okay, and with all the lift pumps that were, or all the lift stations were running. Am I correct that we're actually running two different pumps? They're not all running the same model, same series?
Through your worship, I don't have the answer to that. Is the question more on compatibility between pumps at separate stations?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, I don't, I unfortunately don't know the answer to that question.
Well, I see some hands at the back, maybe Mr. Murphy.
Through your worship, from the previous one, I actually do recall this, this question coming up as well. We have two separate pumps. I believe one is compatible at five of the seven lift stations and the other is compatible at two of the seven. I, don't, don't quote me on that, but it's something along those lines, but two separate pumps.
No, I, I believe you're right. That's what was my question. If we're looking at putting one on a shelf, we should have one of each type thing. Because when this stuff goes wrong, it's, you know.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any other questions or comments? Counselor Hicks.
This is just a quick one and I don't know if you can answer it through you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any possibility that is the two that are not the same as the five? Whereout, burnout, fail, they can be replaced with the same model? And I also have a question and I know you can't answer it possibly, but what is the maintenance program on these? Are they routinely taken out, maintained, like repaired, checked and a spare one put in? Are they routinely taken out, maintained, like repaired, checked and a spare one put in to operate?
Through your worship, the answer to question one, I believe the answer would be yes. So if one of those incompatible pumps were to fail, then yes, the the intention would be to purchase another pump that would then become compatible or compatible. And then with regard to the the ongoing maintenance, yes, the the stations are routinely inspected on a on a very regular basis and in operations of the pumps and assessment of VFD curves are undertaken on a regular basis to ensure ramp up and ramp down times are are occurring as designed effectively.
Thanks. Thanks, Michael. Is there any other questions or comments for Michael? Seeing none, we've got a recommendation that council received for information. The Infrastructure Services Utilities Emergency Purchase of Two Sewage Lift Station Pumps Report. And further that council approved the purchase and sole sourcing of two pumps from Salzer Pumps. And further that council approved for the use of utilities, capital, maintenance, reserve funds to cover any overages in the utilities operations budget that may result from this specific purchase. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaws, I don't believe Madam Kirk, we have any bylaws on this evening's agenda. Information reports from members. And again, this, this is one of those new categories that we have that if any of the members or the chairs of their their committees wish to to highlight anything over the last term, you're more than welcome to do that this evening. Does anybody have anything they'd like to highlight from their committees? Seeing none, inquiries. Do any members of council have any inquiries that they would like staff to to take back and try and find some answers for them? Seeing none, notice of motions. Do any members of council have any notices of motions they'd like to present tonight? Seeing none, new business, any new business? I don't believe there's any new business that we're aware of, Madam Clerk, if I'm correct? Okay, seeing none, announcements. Are there any announcements that any members of council would like to to make this evening? And I guess this is kind of the old statements by members is for some of us are a little long on the tooth. Is there any announcements anybody would like to make tonight? Seeing none, the forward calendar. I know we've all had an opportunity to see the forward calendar. Is there any comments or questions with respect what's on the forward calendar? Seeing none, the council resolution tractor tracker. Again, this is something fairly new. It's it's only been around for a number of weeks. Is there anything anybody would like to discuss with respect to the council resolution tracker? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion for the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council, the corporation of town upgraded Nappany. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver, ready first, second and finally passed this 10th day of October 2023. All in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried and motion for adjournment. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, folks. It's an early evening. I'm sure probably won't be at the next meeting, but we'll try and keep it short if we can. Thanks again. And we'll be back in a couple of weeks.